...third 2015 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. Want to make sure we get everyone out of here in relatively quick order this evening. I don't think it should be too long of a meeting, but with that, I want to just ask everyone, if you happen to have a cellphone, if you could please put that on silent, if you've got an important call, if you could take it in the hallway, we'd appreciate it. I also want to welcome and acknowledge Wayne Strausberg, the Director of Administration of Wycomico County, has joined us this evening. Welcome, Wayne. And then I'm going to invite Reverend Bill Reed, Associate Pastor at Parkway Church of God, to come forward and deliver the city invocation. Reverend Reed?
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to seek your wisdom and direction for our city. Thank you for the mayor and the city council of Salisbury. Thank you for those that protect us at the fire department and the police department. Thank you for the men and women that serve our city. Thank you for the citizens of Salisbury that make this such a special place to live. We pray your blessings upon our meeting tonight, as the wise man Solomon prayed in Proverbs 24, "Through skillful and godly wisdom is a house, a life, a home, a family, and a city built; by understanding it is established on a sound and good foundation; and by knowledge shall its chambers of every area be filled with all precious and pleasant riches." A wise man is strong and better than a strong man, and a man of knowledge increases and strengthens his power. Father, we pray that may this spirit and attitude of Solomon be prominent in our meeting tonight. Thank you again, and we pray that you would bless our city. Amen.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, if you don't mind, I'd like to just also add my prayers and thoughts for the family of Salisbury University students, Susanna Batters, who was killed in a car accident on Route 50 yesterday, or she passed yesterday, along with her father and boyfriend. She's a Salisbury University freshman. Her family's in our thoughts and prayers. All right. Now I'd like to invite forward, first, we've got two community organization presentations, and first I'd like to invite forward Melissa Beatty-Johnson, who's going to be joining us. She is the Chief Operating Officer at Riverside and Milford Street Pharmacies, and she'll be making a presentation on community prescription and illicit drug abuse in Wycomico County.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate the opportunity to address all of you about an ongoing crisis that we're facing in Wycomico County, and that is the abuse and misuse of prescription and illicit drugs in the area. This is a quick reminder of why I got involved in discussing prescription drugs especially. This is January 4th, 2012, and that is the man with a gun in my pharmacy. And at about that time, I realized that this was not an us and them situation. This was a community situation, and there were people that we knew very well, people that we had dealt with in a professional manner, who were in the throes of addiction and, as a result, were willing to do whatever it took to get what they needed to feed that I want to be clear, and I'm always clear about this, I'm not anti-prescription drug. It would be silly of me to be anti-prescription drug.[245.12][245.12](Laughter) Feeds my family, all that good stuff. But what we're talking about here is the misuse of prescription drugs, particularly as it relates to Wycomico County. And I'm not going to bog you down with a lot of statistics today, because I just really want to talk most about the impact on the community as members of the community. But we are a prescription-happy culture. When I go into schools and speak about prescription drug abuse, I take this slide with me. They chuckle, because they recognize those people in the bathtubs, okay? But they recognize these visuals from prescription drug advertisements. We are one of two countries in the world that allows direct-to-consumer prescription drug advertising. I'm not sure why they do it in New Zealand, but they're the other one. And the reason for that is that we're not doctors, or some of you may be doctors, I apologize. Usually I talk to high school students. If you're a doctor, carry on, write prescriptions. The rest of us are not doctors. But this type of advertising gives us the idea that we know how best to take care of ourselves. We can go into the doctor and say, "I have this problem, I need this drug. I don't sleep well, can I get that drug with the moth?" Okay? And as a result, we tend to play doctor, and we think that there's a pill to fix everything. And Lunesta, in particular, there, is a controlled drug. That's direct-to-consumer advertising of a drug that is potentially addictive. Okay? So that's an issue in and of itself. I use the word junkie a lot when I speak, because it is a loaded term. It's not because I like the term, but I think it brings up a lot of emotions. I think we all have an image in our head of what we think of when we think junkie. Okay? So does everyone have that image? You've got your own image, they may be different. There they are. Okay? Somebody forgot to tell these folks that junkies are stupid and ugly, and they're supposed to die somewhere where no one sees them. Okay? These are all examples of beautiful, talented people who killed themselves in front of the world. Okay? And obviously, we've got some oldies but goodies up there. This is not a new problem. In each case, a combination of prescription and illicit drugs were in play. All right. Fortunately, and through a great deal of community cooperation in the last several years, a lot has been done to address prescription drug abuse in the Salisbury area. We've worked with an inter-agency prescription drug task force with the Health Department, state, county, and city police to really address that problem. Doctors who were writing prescriptions irresponsibly are no longer writing prescriptions at all, and that has addressed a big part of the problem. But that leads us to whack-a-mole. Okay? Have you ever played whack-a-mole on the boardwalk? Okay? I am delighted that I'm seeing fewer people seeking drugs illicitly in the pharmacy. But what that means at this point is that we've whacked that mole. Okay? We've taken care of the prescription drug side. Unfortunately, another mole has popped up, and it's heroin. And it is here. It is not a sensational news story, it's not people just talking. Heroin is here, and it is being used by younger and younger people on a regular basis. It is here, and it is cheap. That's another big issue. Okay? Prescription drugs became very expensive, particularly when the supply dried up. Okay? So heroin became a cheap alternative, and it is something that is infecting our community and our schools. And just like that man who came into the pharmacy with a gun, these people have friends, they have families, and they will do what needs to be done to feed that addiction. Okay? And that's a tremendous concern. So a lot is being done also to address the heroin side of the problem, but the real root of the problem is the addiction itself. It's much more difficult to treat addiction than it is to deal with prevention. Now, it's hard to teach prevention as well, because if you're starting early enough, you're starting with little kids. We're starting, I am in middle schools, speaking on a regular basis, and they know this stuff. They already know it. So we need to be talking to children who are much younger, and who we don't want to think of them as not being innocent, but they need this information before they get old enough that it's an option. Big piles of money. This is an issue that is costing our community a fortune in lost productivity, in perceptions of the community itself, if we want to attract additional employers, additional industry, high-level employees. The perception of Salisbury as a place where we have a heroin problem costs us money. Money is also an issue in this situation in that it's not a problem that affects a single socioeconomic group. This is a problem that is affecting, quote-unquote, "good kids" as much as it is tough kids. And I use those words kind of interchangeably as well, because everybody thinks their kid's good. And my friends get sick of hearing it, but if they say to me, I tell them, "If you tell me not my kid, you're already in trouble. If you can think not my kid, then your kid's already in trouble," because they've got you convinced that they can't do something wrong. But a lot of families of children with resources are falling victim to this issue as well, and we know far less about it because of the shame that accompanies addiction. We don't know what's going on there, and it makes it much harder to address. Those kids are seeking treatment privately. If and when they overdose, if and when they die, you're not going to hear that that's what happened. But it's happening. We have members of law enforcement saying, "Yeah, pulled kids over leaving Westminster." Heroin in the car. Okay? So we're talking about, you know, our upper-income subdivisions, and this is an issue there as well. So money plays a lot of different factors in the situation. Local initiatives, and this is just a brief rundown, because I know I don't get the whole meeting. Drug-Free Wycomico is an ongoing program with the Wycomico County Health Department. They really work on the prevention side. Cindy Schiffler in the Health Department has been working on it for years, and it brings together stakeholders from throughout the community to work on prevention initiatives. The Prescription Drug Task Force was initially put together after the man with the gun. We were actually one of five pharmacies robbed at gunpoint in a six-week period that year. That was a bad year. That was initially formed as a law enforcement group. After that, when it was disbanded due to the problem being basically solved at that point, it was taken over by the Health Department as well. And so it's sort of the flipside of Drug-Free Wycomico. That, again, includes law enforcement, Health Department, prevention, treatment, pharmacy, and it allows us all to communicate about what we're seeing in the community, and that has been a tremendous, tremendous help, because we're not all coming at it from the same angle. And so hearing those other angles has been tremendously important, I think. The Overdose Fatality Review Team is my least favorite meeting of the month, but it is crucial. It's something that, after Wycomico County was identified as number three in overdose deaths in Maryland several years ago, we were not asked, we were told, "You will have an overdose fatality review team." Monthly, we get together, social services, EMS, law enforcement, pharmacy, and members of the hospital staff to discuss each overdose death in the county, to, again, obviously it's too late in this one instance, but to look at the contact that this person had with the system throughout his or her life and addiction, to see what interventions might take place in the future for others. The Prescription Drug Monitoring Program was rolled out in October of 2013, so it's been up and running for just over a year now. That's a big development on the prescription side that allows pharmacies and prescribers to log into a state database to track controlled drug prescription fills, cash, insurance, otherwise, to ensure that someone is not doctor shopping or pharmacy shopping. And that has been extremely effective in whacking that mole, if you will. And last, the Prescription Drug Speakers Bureau. If you have an event, a group, a civic organization that needs information, particularly about prescription drugs, but certainly about illicit drugs as well, contact the Health Department. They will find you a speaker. She will likely be me. But that is something that we're doing frequently. I was in every secondary school health class last year, talking to kids about prescription drug abuse, and I was really grateful to get their sense of what's going on in our community as well. Last, very quickly, are a couple of resources, things that are being rolled out locally as well. The Naloxone Training Program is available through the Wycomico County Health Department. Naloxone is a drug that will reverse overdose. You can sign up for the Naloxone Training Program online through the Health Department. It's a free program. You are trained how to administer the nasal naloxone, how to assemble the adapter, and how to reverse an overdose, and what the steps should be to follow at that point. So if you are close to someone who has an issue with addiction, this is an important program. You can give yourself the tools that you need to save that person's life. Next is the 2-1-1 hotline. I don't know if any of you have heard of that, but 2-1-1 is like a 9-1-1, but if you use it to report drug overdose, you're going to get someone there, you're going to get the help you need, you're not going to be prosecuted. We're really trying to get this one out to youth in particular, because too many young people are dying because their friends are afraid to take them to the hospital or to call 9-1-1. The Health Department is a wealth of resources. Their addiction services, their prevention services as well are tremendous. And last, just the people that you see every day that have to do with drugs, physicians, pharmacists, counselors. Everyone has really come up to speed on these issues, rather, in the last couple of years, and they will talk to you, they will point you in the right direction. But it really does take a community to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you do need to contact me. You may?
Thank you so much. Any questions for Ms. Johnson, while she's here? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all your insight, and we actually have a second speaker tonight on the same topic, or on a similar topic. And this is Beth Olson, the Executive Director of the Salisbury Substance Abuse Community Center. We'd like to invite Ms. Olson forward to speak to us about her organization and their good work.
And thank you for having me.
Of course.
We are part of the solution, or we strive to be part of the solution. You know, in the Midwest, our acronym is SAC. In the Midwest, a SAC is a brown paper bag. In Salisbury, it's the Salisbury Substance Abuse Community Center, and the fact that our building looks like a paper bag is mere coincidence.[977.11][977.11](Laughter) Okay? The SAC Center is a small nonprofit organization that rents space, provides space to 12-step groups in the area. How many of you know what a 12-step group is? Wow, I'm impressed, that's awesome. We have 35 meetings a week at the SAC Center. Roughly 1,000 times a week, somebody crosses our threshold to get help. And here's what's so critical. Melissa was talking about what happens to people in the throes of an addiction, and when somebody shows up in a mask with a gun, he or she no longer resembles the human being you used to know, and they have forgotten everything they know about learning to live as a decent, contributing human being. What happens in the context of a 12-step meeting is that people learn just how to do that. They're guided by a set of principles, they are taught, they have sponsors, and they get together, and they figure out how to navigate life without the benefit or a drink or a drug. Now, that sounds like it should be no big deal, but I will tell you, when my father died, the first phone call I got was somebody inviting me for a drink. First phone call. Not, "I'm sorry," but, "I heard your dad died, want to come over for a drink?" And that's how, as Melissa pointed out, we have decided that pain is fatal as a culture, and so learning to navigate emotional and physical pain without benefit of drugs or alcohol is really, really, really a challenge. To what extent is the community affected? Well, it's horrific. The statistics that's been around for a long time is that roughly 10% of any given population is addicted to drugs or alcohol, and that's one out of every 10 people you know. Doctors, lawyers, policemen, correctional officers, teachers, pastors, we can go on and on and on. It is an equal-opportunity destroyer. Unfortunately, as Melissa said, there's such shame that a lot of those people don't ever go for help, because they don't want to be one of those people. And that is the blessing of the 12-step fellowships, is their anonymity. We don't keep records. I can't tell you who comes into that building, because once they come in, their identity is protected. What they do out in the parking lot or out in the world at large is on them, but when they come into a meeting, they are protected. It is private, it is safe. Why is that such a big deal? Well, what happens to the high school teacher who thinks she drinks too much? She goes into a treatment agency, and she sees the father of one of her students, and she's there, what's she going to do? Is she going to turn around and say, "Hi, fancy meeting you here?" You know? It's really hard, but you can go to a 12-step meeting and get the information you need and the support you need, because nobody's going to give you a medal for doing what you should have been doing all along. But if you go to a 12-step meeting, they go, "Yeah, you're right, that's really hard." And you get support, and you get encouragement and acknowledgement for learning how to live decently. Let me look at this, I don't want to go off track. Oh, yeah, ripple effect. Family of the alcoholic or addict is affected, children are neglected and abused, children grow up believing that addictive behavior and criminal activity are normal. There may be divorce. The spouse may suffer at the hand of the addict or alcoholic. Employees, employers who work with them have to deal with tardiness, lost productivity, and so on. Local businesses are affected by the thefts that help addicts support their habit. Hospital emergency rooms are crowded with overdoses, suicide attempts, ideation, or basic, non-critical care, because they've lost their insurance, they've lost their ID cards, they've done all of that. Legal system is overwhelmed with people who are in there for drug-related crimes, and there's no treatment there. You know, treatment is effective, but treatment ends. It's an event, it has a beginning, a middle, and end. And I don't know anybody who learns how to function as an adult in the six or eight months that a treatment episode takes. And that's why the support group, the support of a 12-step fellowship is important, and it's why we have the SAC Center, because those people typically, in the beginning, don't have a lot of resources. And so we are supported by donations and corporate sponsors, and by the groups themselves that use it. We also have to take a good look at ourselves, and this is really hard, because when one of those addicts or alcoholics tries to get better, it's really hard to treat them well, because they're the people that stole from you, they're the people who lied to you, they're the people who blah, 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 blah. But learning how to live as a responsible adult is really hard, especially if your body is telling you you need something that ultimately is going to kill you. So I think it's important that when people get into a place where they are willing to recover from drug and alcohol abuse, that they get the support and help that they need from their families, from their community, and from the SAC Center. You know, we're there to help. We serve almost 50,000 times a year, somebody comes into our building, and it is the best-kept secret in Salisbury. So I'm going to close with alcoholics are anonymous, but the SAC Center is not, and we're here to help. Thank you.
Beth, if you could, real quick, where can people get in touch with you?
I have cards.
Where are you located? Can you say it for the folks at home on?
Okay, absolutely can. The SAC Center is at 726 South Salisbury Boulevard, but it is on the backside of the building. We face Waverly Drive, and we are directly across from the laundromat, and it looks like a big brown paper bag, it really does. SAC.
And do you have a phone number if somebody wanted you to call?
And like Melissa, I am perfectly willing to come talk to whomever about addiction and recovery, because that's why we're here.
Thank you, and we thank you both for coming tonight to address this incredibly important issue. We appreciate it. Anything for?
One other thing, you had mentioned a couple of needs when I talked to you at the Community Foundation, about that the SAC Center needs some chairs and things like that.
Yes, we need chairs.
If you could share that, if people want to help, how can they help?
People want to help, yeah, we need chairs. 50,000 visits a year, we need chairs, they break a lot. We need to have the building painted. We've been there for a long time, and the building is basically ugly inside, so we need the inside of the building painted. We would love to have a kitchen. We would be much more, we would love to be more of a community center and not just a meeting place. There are some recovery clubs, there's one in Cambridge and one in Ocean City that have that capacity, and they are able to do a lot more for the recovery community, so we would love to have a kitchen. But we also need to keep our doors open, so any donation that would come our way is greatly appreciated.
Another question.
What availability is there for families of addicts? Addicts who are either in program or not in program?
Okay, that's a really good question. There is a fellowship called ALANON, that's A-L-A-N-O-N. It's for families and friends of the alcoholic or addict. There is, Narcotics Anonymous has NAR-ANON, but the only meeting is in Cambridge. I researched that today for someone, so that's the closest meeting. But if you have, whether it's an addict or alcoholic, ALANON addresses those issues and is wonderful, is wonderful. And there are meetings every day in Salisbury, and there are meetings every day in Worcester County. Both of these organizations you can find online, alanon.org, alanonfamilygroup.org, or aa.org, na.org, or SAC.org.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
Salute.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to remove Resolution 2489, which is the capital improvement plan, sorry. That was supposed to come back to work session, was my understanding. We got a brief overview at the last meeting, but we haven't gotten to dig into it yet. And I'd like to remove that back to work session.
For a second?
Yeah, I'll offer a second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, that was, when it was brought forward, it was supposed to be, that was our introduction to it, and it ended up on the agenda, and we wanted to get in a little bit deeper before we, I do anyway, before we actually adopted it.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, the things that were outlined...
Well, we only hit three departments.
We're going to go through this in budget, to me, and we'll be meeting with the ones that made the presentation, and the ones who did not make the presentation. And I'm quite sure some of the things, the CIP, will be discussed in our budget meetings, because as we said, it's a wish list, it's nothing that we're going to be spending money on right now.
The only thing that we'll be discussing in the budget meeting would be this year's, the portion that would pertain to 2016 and not anything beyond that.
So what is your request?
Just to pull that back to another work session, or at least to the next meeting, just so we have a little more time to go through it and see if we have any other questions, or whether or not we even need another presentation at work session. I just haven't gotten all the way through it myself, and my understanding was that it was coming back to work session, so I...
So the next work session is April 6th, with the following legislative session, April Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Any thoughts from the administration on what that does to your timeline?
The administration would have no objection, if that's what the council chooses.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I personally have no objection either way. I'd be comfortable, given my understanding of the CIP as presented, moving forward, but if we want to wait, give it another week's time. Are we requesting any additional staff be available? Is that what you're requesting for the conversation?
That was my understanding, is what was being proposed when it came forward at the last work session. At this point, I don't have any particular request for anything specific, but I'm sure that most of the questions can be answered through email or generically, and I've gotten through most of it, but not all of it.
Yeah, forgive me, as you know, I wasn't here last week, I was not feeling well. I think the big three, as we refer to them, Police, Fire, and Public Works made their presentation, and there would be little need for any of the other departments to come in. Of course, Ms. Stan might come, might would come in to talk about the skate park, Ms. Miller about some of the GOB improvements or what have you, but I was not aware that you wanted to see it again at work session, so that's why it ended up on the agenda.
Well, I mean, if it's messing with your timeline, I know we had goals for when we wanted to get it set up or passed, it's fine.
All right, well, I'll call a question. All those in favor of the amendment to the legislative agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't see that there's any, you know, it's not going to put anything back, so if the questions were not answered, that's why my vote is an aye there.
Okay. The chair will vote aye. We'll move it back to April 6th.
Do you make your needs?
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Heath?
Nay.
Nay.
Anything in particular that we could do to be prepared for the presentation?
Can I talk with you tomorrow about...
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All in favor then of the legislative agenda as amended, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Did we have a nay?
Abstain.
Abstention.
Aye.
Aye, all right. One abstention. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right. Ms. Nichols?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have the February 23rd, 2015 closed session minutes, the February 23rd, 2015 work session minutes. We have an approval for manufacturing exemption requests for K&amp;L Microwave for equipment purchased in 2013. Since the request came within two years of the purchase of their equipment, they're eligible for up to five years exemption for the 2013 purchases. So over the next five years, they'll benefit from this exemption by a total savings of $2,672 for their equipment purchases in 2013. The exemptions will be applied to city property tax years 2015 through 2019, and K&amp;L Microwave has previously been granted exemptions for equipment purchased in 2002 and 2003 and 2005 through 2012. We have Resolution Number 2487 approving the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Community of Joy Church of the Brethren for use of city property for a community garden, and Resolution Number 2488 accepting state grant funds awarded through the governor's office of crime control and prevention for the purchase of new and replacement property or protective vests for police officers. And that would be it.
All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Nichols, and thank you to K&amp;L Microwave for your investment in this community. And I just want to call attention to the community garden going in in the North Camden neighborhood. We're just so excited, and thank you all for being here and for pushing on this and for sticking with it for so long and getting it done. So congratulations to Green SBY. Congratulations to Community of Joy and your three partner churches. And so excited, you know, Heather and Gacy and Priscilla, so excited for the great work that's to come. Congratulations.
Mr. Day, I did have one question regarding the K&amp;L Microwave. We had had discussions previously, kind of kicked around about trying to automate that and putting that in the hands of, I mean, it's really very formulaic and leaving it with finance at their discretion to approve these instead of having everyone have to come to council. I think that holds up everything for everybody. Could we check on where we are with that and whether we can or cannot, should or shouldn't have that discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Miller?
Good evening, council. The procurement department has two items on the agenda this evening. Both are requests for declaration of surplus. The first is for the police vehicles, units numbers 10, 11, 15, 25, 30, and actually number 48. It's correct in the department memo, not my memo. The procurement division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare six vehicles, the noted units, as surplus. These units meet established criteria used to determine vehicle replacement. Additional details regarding condition and estimated repair costs are noted in the department memo. Upon declaration of surplus, as approved by council, the aforementioned vehicles will be used as trade-in vehicles. If trade-in does not become a viable option, they will be sold at auction.
Questions for Ms. Miller? Hearing none. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Do you want me to do the second one?
Please.
Okay. The second one is also for the SPD.
Although that'll apply to both of them.
Thank you. Do you want to hear it?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is for the covert police vehicles, units 53, 54, 55, 1357, and miscellaneous forfeiture vehicles. The procurement division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare four covert vehicles and two forfeiture vehicles as surplus. These units also met established criteria, which warrant the vehicles to be pulled from service. Upon declaration of surplus, as approved by council, the noted vehicles will be used as trade-in or, again, sold at an auction.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we've moved Resolution Number 2489 to the April 6th meeting. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2015-3. This is for reading as well as public hearing. This is the change to the primary elections, the removal of the primary elections. Entertain a motion to approve charter amendment Resolution 2015-3. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stevenson?
I'm coming, sorry. Good evening, council.
Evening.
Now, Resolution 2015 is a resolution to amend Article 4 by eliminating section SC 6-7, primary elections, and by amending sections SC 6-11, challengers and watchers, and SC 6-15, tie elections of the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to eliminate the primary elections for the City of Salisbury elected officials. Did you want me to read through the entire thing, or, I mean, that pretty much covers it right there? Yeah.
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right. So before we have questions, I'll open to, open our public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Questions and comments from council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2015-3, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2317 for second reading. This is the issue, the reallocation of the 2003 CDA bonds. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right. Mr. Tillman?
Okay. At first reading, I did my speed reading of just the title of this. I don't know if, I mean, if you have any questions about this before voting on it, I would obviously ask Finance Director to come up here and discuss it, but it's pretty unself-explanatory. You have to read every word of it.
And you reading that title's not going to explain anymore.
Right. But, I mean, how much of it, I don't see the point myself in going through this again, but I'll do it if you wish.
Just a generic statement.
Summary of the title, I think, you know, reading the title would be too much anyway, but summary of the title would be acceptable. I mean, given that we've asked our questions and they've been answered well here, I think. If you could offer a brief summary.
All right, well, basically, to, it's to apply a portion of the proceeds of the $5,614,000 City of Salisbury Infrastructure Bonds 2003 series, and, I mean, it's really, I really almost have to, if you want me to do it, I'll just, let me just go through it because there's too many of them. An ordinance of the council of Salisbury entitled, "Amending and Supplementing Ordinance Number 1870 Passed by the Council on January 27, 2003, Approved by the Mayor on February 3, 2003, and Effective on February 3, 2003," is amended by ordinance number 1888, passed by the council on December 22, 2003, approved by the mayor on January 5, 2004, and effective on January 5, 2004, as further amended by ordinance 2081 passed by the council on August 10, 2009, approved by the mayor on August 10, 2009, and effective on August 10, 2009, in order to authorize and empower the City of Salisbury to use and apply a portion of the proceeds of the $5,614,000 City of Salisbury Infrastructure Bond 2003 series issued on June 18, 2003, and held by the trustee for certain bonds of the Community Development Administration identified herein for the purpose of funding costs of certain projects identified as follows. Number one, city park tennis court lighting improvements. And number two, marina signage and fence improvements, in addition to the projects identified in ordinance 1870 as amended by ordinance 1888 and ordinance 2081. Authorizing and directing officials of the city to approve, effectuate, and deliver amendments, modifications, or supplements to certain bonds, excuse me, documents, agreements, certificates, and instruments executed and delivered in connection with the issuance of the 2003 bond or the $4,828,000 City of Salisbury Public Improvement Refunding Bond Series 2011B Bond, proceeds of which were applied to refund and redeem the 2003 bond. In such additional documents, agreements, certificates, or instruments, as may be necessary or desirable in order to reflect or effectuate matters provided for in this ordinance, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed, providing that title is fair statement of the substance of this ordinance and otherwise generally related to the use of proceeds of the 2003 bond and the 2011B bond. And in short, you're basically using the money that was approved for the projects that we read there.
Yeah, thanks for clearing that up.
We're reallocating leftover money to new projects.
To make it simple.
All right, I'll, before we have questions, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to ordinance number 2317? All right, and again, this is for second reading. I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion, questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2317, this is second reading again, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is ordinance number 2315, setting the stormwater utility fee. I will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2315.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Okay, this is first reading of an ordinance of the city setting the stormwater utility fee in accordance with Chapter 13.30 of the City Code.
Second reading.
Whereas the city established the stormwater...
Excuse me, second reading.
Oh. What have I skipped one?
2315 for stormwater.
2315.
2315.
Second.
Second reading. I'm sorry. Yes, I just skipped to the wrong one here. Sorry about that. First reading, or second reading of 2315, I apologize. Whereas the city established the stormwater utility, Chapter 13.3 of the City Code, by passage of ordinance number 2306 on November 26, 2014, and whereas the code defines the stormwater utility fee to fund the cost of operating, maintaining, and improving the stormwater system in the city, and whereas the stormwater utility fee is charged on an equivalent residential unit ERU rate, and whereas Charter, Chapter 13.30.050 requires the city to establish the annual equivalent residential unit rate, and whereas the Director of Public Works provided the city council with a recommendation of the proposed annual equivalent residential unit rate at the February 2, 2015 city council meeting, and whereas the Director of Public Works has made a diligent effort to notify as many individuals and organizations as practical that may be potentially impacted by the fee. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the annual equivalent residential unit rate of $20 per equivalent residential unit calculated pursuant to the attached memorandum from the Director of Public Works dated January 9, 2015, and its attachments is approved as of July 1, 2015.
We do have one request for comment. I'd like to invite Mr. Eric Fisher for it.
Good evening, council.
Mr. Fisher.
I'll be brief, but Chesapeake Bay Foundation does wish to commend the leadership of this council, as well as the mayor, on this issue. You all have been talking about this for some time, and you are leaders on this issue, but you're certainly not alone. Over 1,400 communities across the nation have taken this step, and with an affirmative vote, you all will join them. As CBF works to help local communities like Salisbury meet their needs and their obligations with respect to clean water, we've seen a number of these ordinances, and I have to say that I don't think that the city's proposed ordinance could be any better. This is a really solid program that you all and your staff have put together. Everything from tying the fee very clearly to specific projects and your capital improvement program, to including a credit program for people who take action and initiative on their own properties, to a hardship provision for folks who this really would put a hardship upon. But more fundamentally than that, I mean, this really started when you all listened to the community in the report of that task force some years ago. You all called in experts with the Environmental Finance Center to sort of fill in the gaps. And then you got the data when you didn't have the data, and you got the impervious surface so that you can say with confidence that this fee is tied to impacts. You all have really gone about this the right way, and you all are doing the right thing. We're proud of you. I hope that's not condescending in any way, but it's great to see this kind of leadership in the city for clean water and for future generations. So thank you again, and we would ask for your support tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any comments, questions from council? I'll just offer, you know, we've talked about this for a long time, so I won't, I won't run my mouth for very long. But I will say that I realize this has been going on for a long time. It seems like a never-ending saga for the City of Salisbury discussing this issue. I think the mayor mentioned to me in passing today that it has been on the table since he took office in 2009. I remember that Environmental Policy Task Force. A good friend of mine, high school classmate, Ryan Ewell, was on that task force and talked to me about some of it when I moved back to Salisbury in 2008. And, you know, so I know that the work was being done at that time. I'll just say that, you know, it's not just trying to be leaders, that this was, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Fisher, but, you know, the goal here is to be fair and to acknowledge that, you know, we've got infrastructure that we haven't, you know, for whatever reason, and I used the term political cowardice in the past, but for whatever reason, for, you know, a century, we haven't funded it adequately. We haven't taken care of it, and we've got a responsibility to do so. And I had the opportunity to look today at the bill moving through the Maryland Senate, which would change the requirements on the 10 counties, nine counties in Baltimore City, requiring a, or applying essentially a forced stormwater utility fee. And, you know, I'm not sure I know what I'm looking at, maybe that's just because legislation is difficult to read, as was evidenced, but one thing that read clear to me is that there's, all 10 of those jurisdictions will still be required to have a stormwater utility of some sort in the very near future. And I'd rather do this without the state having to tell us to do it. So I hope this is effective. I realize that, you know, we're funding it at a lower rate than was recommended by the Environmental Finance Center, but I want to, again, command, commend the mayor, Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Molds, and Ms. Pollak for everything that you did, and especially your department, Mike, everything you did to come up with a streamlined, efficient way of addressing this without a lot of overhead. And that's really how we were able to save money, and that's really commendable, and that's how government should operate. Thank you. And with that, I'll call a question. All those in favor of ordinance number 2315, again, for second reading, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2318. This is for first reading. This is amending a number of elements of the code as it pertains to, again, the elimination of primary elections. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2318.
So moved. Second.
All right. Mr. Tillman?
This is the companion piece to the charter amendment Resolution 2015-3 that we heard earlier with the elimination of primary elections. The purpose of the ordinance was to go through and basically extract references to the primary elections. The first, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending sections 1.08.020, duties of the election board, 1.12.030, campaign contributions, and 1.12.040, financial disclosure statements to be filed by the candidate or treasurer of the Salisbury Municipal Code to eliminate primary elections. And if you look down there, the under 1.08.020, in line 25, we're just eliminating the word "primary" there and changing a little bit of the punctuation so that it fits. In addition, under 1.12.030, in lines 37 and 38, we're, first in 37, we're putting the word "for" before "in kind," and then the following sentence is eliminated, which referred to primary elections. And the next change under that same section, which would be in subsection C, line 50, the... language for both the primary and general election is eliminated so that it, the reference there is simply the $500 per campaign. In line 53, contributions of in-kind services, the word "such" was just, as I was going through it, I thought, let's clean it up and get rid of that, so that's what we did. And then under the next amendment would be under 1.12.040, line 62 and 63, the reference to seven days prior to the primary election and are eliminated. The next change is down there in line 76, and the words "primary" and "general" are eliminated, so it just refers to $600 for the election, singular. Line 79, the word "primary elections" and "seven days prior to the" are eliminated from that line as well, just to, so now it's making reference only to the one general election to be held. And that's it.
All right. Any comments or questions from counsel? Okay, hearing none, and this is again for first reading. All those in favor of ordinance 2318, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on our agenda is ordinance Number 2319, also for first reading. This is amending Chapter 1.08 to ensure that our code aligns to the number of councilmanic districts that we created when we made the charter change. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
See, it was the ladies getting the, you know, motions and seconds, and then you two did it, and now you're confusing me.
We let them in.
All right.
It's just hot.
It's just hot, and we're hurt. Understood. Got a motion in a second, Mr. Tillman?
All right. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 1.08.300 of the Salisbury Municipal Code to change the number of councilmanic districts in the city to correspond with the charter. And this was passed as a result of the charter amendments that created five separate councilmanic districts, and the language here that needs to be changed under that section is the reference, if you look at line 18, the city shall have, and instead of two, it reads one councilmanic district per council member. And there shall be one precinct corresponding to each councilmanic district. Voting records shall be kept pursuant to the divisional lines as established by the county board. So it's a very simple correction to reflect the change that's already been made in the charter.
All right, comments or questions from counsel? Just while we're at it, Mr. Tillman, I know we've asked for an update, you know, we've talked about this almost every time that we've been together, but I just want to ask, you know, keep asking and make sure that we're making progress on the court case.
Both the motion and the draft order were completed and should have been sent to the attorney for the ACLU today with a request that she sign it. We had, I think, last time I reported to you that we had their comments back, and we've put together, it's, you know, a simple motion with about four or five attachments that, one of which is the, most important of which is the resolution to amend the charter, explaining what we did, and then there are a few other attachments that reflect the, the actual demographics in each district so that the court can be satisfied that what we did was fair and pursuant to law. And assuming that the ACLU signs it, it will be filed shortly thereafter.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance Number 239, 2319, for first reading, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We do also have one additional request for public comment. Mr. Michael Lane?
Good evening, counsel.
Evening.
I'm Michael Lane, Deputy Attorney General of African American Concerned Men. The issue is HIV, the issue in our community where AIDS and HIV is, is an issue here. If we're talking about the growth and development of Salisbury and having people to move to Salisbury, then we need to address the issue of HIV and bringing that information to the people so that, because there's a fear, there's a fear of people not having the knowledge or understanding about that disease, about that illness, that not only contracted by HIV by, by people who's using needles, but through trans, by, through sexual activities. And if we, as a community, do not get the information to the people about how you contract this disease or what's going on, we need to take the fear out of the people. This is an issue that, there are no other place that's better for the city council to address it, to get information out, and we just had the drug counseling to people that deal with addiction, and these people are talking about abuse of drugs, and when you take drugs, it changes the mental concept, your mental mind, your thinking. So you go out and you participate in, in, unless it's sex, and you're transferred, because if you get a cut and you shake someone's hand, it can be transferred. If you have to have something in your, and a cuts in your mouth, a bruise in your mouth, and you kiss someone, it can be transferred. There are many ways in which this, this disease can be transferred, but family members are, have this HIV in their family, and we need to, but they're afraid, there's a separation, there's a division in the family, there's a, there's a fear in the community of people having this, and they're not being able to communicate or to deal with society functions in, in society. But if we're talking about the growth and the development of Salisbury and having, having people migrate here, we're not saying that they're bringing it here because it's already exists here. In the black community and every other ethnic group, there are HIV situations of people with this disease. So we only asking that city council will take, consider, will consider this and put something out in, in, in the community and let people know that you have the knowledge of, of what's going on with this disease and, and having these, having the, the drug treatment centers to talk more about it, to bring it to the attention of families and, and the drug users in our community. I thank you. That's, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Yeah, I wonder if we couldn't, we appreciate your comments, wonder if we couldn't invite the health department to come speak at one of our council meetings as a community organization for a presentation?
Absolutely. And I would recommend also, sir, that, excuse me, you take your, take your comments before the county council as well, if you could do that.
Thank you.
And they meet tomorrow, I believe, next?
The next Tuesday.
Following Tuesday?
Glad we have you here.
And there was, there was a story on the news last night, on the evening news, Midwestern town, I can't remember if Kansas comes to mind, but I don't think that was right, where the CDC is actually descending upon them because they have now got an outbreak. They're not calling it an epidemic, but an outbreak, steep rise in HIV cases due to intervening drug-using epidemic.
Well, our heroin problem follows definitely through that.
Well, that's why I thought, it was very, very timely comment that, you know, the two are not separate.
Not at all.
Thank you. Mr. Lane, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I wish our friends from Pokemoke City had come tonight when we did keep it to an hour, we actually had a shorter agenda than.
I'll pass the order.
Yeah, please do. All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you all.